We're here.
I told, I texted Brian to use the link in the agenda. We're gonna go ahead and get started. It, this is as soon as I can get to my script where I wanna be. Okay, city council meeting, regular business meeting for Thursday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty five. It is six oh one P M. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Baker, Brown, Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston, here. Minniki?
Yes.
Mayor Phillips?
I'm here. Uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, Lindsay, would you note when, if or when Brian gets logged in?
Will do.
Thank you. Uh, item number two on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Would you please rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Uh, we're going to remove item ten from tonight's agenda. Would anybody like to move any of these consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Harry, now can I get the motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by, uh, Cool. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All supposed same. Motion carries. Item four is welcome of guests and public comment. Thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up the dais at this point in time to address council and myself and staff, uh, on non-agenda items. We'll give you three minute time limit. Realize we can't take action on those. Anything that you wanna talk about tonight, since they aren't on the agenda, and that would be a violation of both meetings law. Uh, also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. Do we have any takers? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Item number five, we have a proclamation tonight. There's a proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Chief Mantola is here to give a little update about Westcom and talk about, uh, the proclamation. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for being here.
Allow me to do our annual presentation of what we've accomplished. So during two thousand and twenty four, uh, we upgraded the entire nine one one telephone system to the latest version. Now gives us text to nine one one and a few other frills, and we're looking forward to the next upgrade later this year, uh, which should give us automated voice recognition and translation. Just found that out this morning, so we're pretty happy about that. Uh, computer aided dispatch system. Uh, we were two versions behind. We are now on the latest, greatest version of the computer aided dispatch system. And it's running very smoothly and we're very pleased with that capability. We also completed a police record management system rehost, removed it from the old system to the new virtual servers, um, that are now housed within the West Des Moines complex. Uh, so both our data centers now, there's one at Station Nineteen where we reside, and the other ones over at, uh, Fifty Street Water Tower. Uh, so they're a hundred percent in our control and we don't pay rent anymore. Like we were with Arian, uh, over on the Des Moines side, but they're moving downtown and we're not moving with them. So we worked hard with West Des Moines I T and we brought everything in house. So we have redundancy. The biggest thing we've been working on for the last two years is called the CAD to CAD project. It's a little black box, basically, that allows us to interface and exchange data information from Des Moines P D, Polk County. We're working with Dallas, we're working with Warren County, uh, to be able to see each other's information, see each other's vehicles, activities, so that we can respond quicker, faster to a situation that may be coming up. No more picking up the telephone, having to call, wait for somebody to answer, discuss it. Now we can do it all electronically, quick and fast. Uh, we're in the last stages of that and it's working very well. It's, like I said, it's a joint effort. It's been going on for four years now, uh, to develop this. It was paid by a grant, so out of pocket expenses did not play into it. How did we perform? Last year, we had fifty nine thousand one hundred and fifty four nine one one calls. Uh, little down from the previous year. Uh, the more significant is eighty six point six percent of these were cell phones, which is on the rise, uh, to about two to three thousand calls increase per year. We answered one hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty three administrative calls. Maybe I should have pre-said, most of you know Westcom is a conglomerate of six cities. Uh, you're just one of the six. So when I, when I say nine one one calls, admin calls, we answer for one hundred and eighty eight thousand residents, about a hundred and fifty square miles. During sixty five text to nine one one messages we received and responded to, we created a hundred and seventy two trips, as they call it, or basically we created a hundred and seventy two calls in which the public safety fire police EMS responded to within our service area. We, I thought I'd throw this in, it probably doesn't mean much to a lot of people, but whenever the police run license plate, or they run a person, a place, or thing, we have to do a query in this national computer database. So last year, we did a hundred and forty eight thousand of these entries in the computer database. But we received six hundred and forty five thousand returns. So make one query, but you get this plethora of documents, because you can imagine if I run John Smith, it's huge. So the police, fire, and all them are really good about giving us, you know, first name, middle initial, last name, date of birth, so we narrow that search down. Um, but seven hundred and ninety three thousand of those we had to respond to, which is kind of crazy in its own right. Looking at our nine one one calls, uh, statistically, that's about a hundred and sixty two per day. Admin, uh, three hundred and twelve per day, queries four hundred and six per day. So eight hundred and eighty times per day, my staff has to take action, whether it's receiving, transmitting, about thirty seven actions per hour is what they do with a staff of five to six on an average. But we do it very well. We answer all nine one one calls with ninety two percent accuracy in less than ten seconds, which doesn't mean much till you see the next two statistics, which is the national average. Uh, we're required to answer within fifteen seconds. Ninety percent of the time, we do it at ninety eight percent, and ninety five percent within twenty seconds, which we do at ninety nine percent. We instill that we perform better than others. Little bit of our education, uh, we had, we spent seven hundred and six hours this year, last year, doing training in what we call a seven week academy. Fourteen hundred and sixty four hours per person for on the job training hours, and two thousand six hundred and forty five hours per person on just their continuing education to keep all our certifications. Medical certification, fire certifications, law certifications, everything that we do. You'll see quite a few pictures in this year's slideshow. I just thought I would put in pictures and less talk. So, a couple accomplishments here. Peg White, uh, we do send our senior supervisors off to leadership academies, like in Milwaukee, Des Moines, other places, and so far, I think we have our five supervisors, four have completed it. We have a new supervisor, so she's scheduled. We also get visits from the therapy dogs. This is the new, this is the pain in my side, as I shared with Luke and the rest of the management committee this week. Translation services. Uh, last year, we received thirty four different languages that had to be translated. Uh, Spanish is our number one, at seventy five percent of our calls. Uh, but there were twenty thousand minutes of translation, four hundred and sixty eight hours, to a tune of fifty four thousand dollars. When I arrived here in March of two thousand and twenty three, that number was less than twenty four thousand a year. So this is my one pet peeve this year that I expect to change at lower cost. Uh, life saving awards, just to highlight, anytime our operators are either on a CPR call, birth a baby, any type of services they provide before the ambulance arrives, the fire truck arrives, the police arrive, and it's a successful outcome. Uh, by our instructions, the, the person was able to survive a heart attack and so on. We hand out life safe awards. We did seventeen of those last year, pretty busy year for us. Uh, and these are just some of the pictures of our people that got awards. Do outreach. Anytime you would like us to be at a party, an event, celebration, just reach out to us, we'll put you in with our outreach coordinator, and my people love to come talk about Westcom. We had a retirement last year. Uh, Cuddy Michaels there on the left, on the right side, uh, did twenty, I think twenty three years with us. Uh, right now, out of my forty three person staff, I have one third that have been there over twenty years. Two thirds that have been there over ten years. So they, they hang around. Uh, we also sponsored our first annual retiree luncheon, uh, along, it was in coin, in, in the same time we did Cuddy's retirement. Uh, it's just something that our association wanted to start to celebrate the retirees every year. Uh, it's, most of us are, we not getting younger. One of the things that I'm launching this year, um, is what I call Westcom Reimagine Campaign. The management committee and Luke and them know very well. One of the goals that we started in November was to relook at Westcom. We're looking at every expense, every line item, every vendor, internal, external, we don't care. We're touching everything. And are we doing the right job? Are we spending money wisely? Can we improve on that? What do we need to do? Well, part of that, next August, is our twenty fifth anniversary of Westcom existing. So, uh, as of this month, I'm eighteen months out to start the reimagine campaign. Let's relook at Westcom. Are, should we be doing the same thing we did twenty five years ago? No. It's modern, there's technology, there's savings, there's efficiencies that we can use and grasp. So we're gonna look at ourselves by reimagining who we are as an image. What, what's the mental picture of Westcom? You know, if you're out in the public, somebody says Westcom probably doesn't mean much unless you've had to dial nine one one, or you've had a visit from one of our services. That's one of our number one goals. We need to get Westcom out there like a common word. Somebody hears it, they know exactly who we are, what we are. New concept. New creative way, imagine a new identity. And reimagine is really the act of forming new ideas or conception. And what I'm sharing with you today is the example of artificial intelligence. You've heard the word, you've heard the term. Most people think it's something brand new. I'm sorry to tell you, you've been doing it for ten years or more and you just didn't know it. Uh, but it's now becoming common in public safety. So we're gonna embrace it, but what I would show you is just a few stats. There was a poll conducted in two thousand and twenty one that asked one question. Will A I be more impactful than prior technology adaptations? Internet, cell phones, things like that. In two thousand and twenty one, only forty percent of the population thought it would be. In two thousand and twenty three, forty eight percent thought it would be. The poll last month, fifty six say, oh yeah. It's probably gonna happen. And then if you take the two earlys along with that, you're looking at, uh, seventy to eighty percent believe that A I is here. And it is, and it will be, and we'll use it. One tragedy we did have last year is we did lose one of our people to an accident, a eighteen year veteran. It's a hard time. It was this time of last year. Uh, so we celebrated him. And speaking of National Public Safety Telecommunicated Week, which is coming up in April, we're dedicating that entire week to Jesse and his family. Any questions? It's older than last year.
Going forward, what would you, what do you think is your greatest challenge in organization going forward?
Our greatest challenge is, you know, we're, we're living in a basement of a public safety station in West Des Moines. You know, there's some people that believe we should probably move out into another facility, and I was kinda on that track. But being respectful to budget, state, what the state's doing to all six of our cities, uh, that concepting just doesn't make sense. So part of our reimagining campaign is where we looking at the station? What can we do to improve our facility so that we can stay there longer? That's, that's one of our biggest challenges. But the other one is simply turnover. You know, the national average of telecommunicator turnover is thirty percent. Unfortunately, we're doing much higher than that, which is not something to be proud of. Um, so, uh, we just hired five people two weeks ago. They will be assigned mentors, a one-on-one mentor effective next week, in the hopes to, uh, keep them on board, keep them retained, keep them engaged, so they have somebody to talk to, somebody to relate with when they have a question. So that's what our, part of our goal is, is we, we need to quit this revolving door stuff. We need to hold people, keep people. Part of that's giving them a better place to work. The other part is updating the schedule. Probably gonna go to a four day work week. Because they, they really value their time off more than they value working five days a week. Since November last year, they've averaged twelve hour shifts, mandated overtime, because we were eight short. We were able to get five in the door two weeks ago. We had six hired, but one didn't show up for orientation. Oh well, move on. Uh, we just got approval today to start another, uh, recruiting campaign, because we're still three short. So we're gonna start that campaign and hopefully have those people on board by July. We can keep the momentum going.
We appreciate the high quality service you provide. From the beginning, yeah.
How do you address the translation issue?
Translation is, you know, there's other software companies we can go to. Cost is not gonna be significant more or less. So what we're embracing is A I. That's why we brought it up. Even our own computer aided dispatch vendors, we found out today, is gonna be offering A I translation services October of this year. Des Moines P D kind of was the guinea pig for us here in the metro. They bought a application late last year. Uh, so what it does is it automatically interprets your language, translates it to English. Type it in English, it goes back to them in their native language for over a hundred and seventy different languages. Really speed up the process and the time.
I, I could have used that in Scotland a couple of years.
It's, it's text to nine one one, is that a, how, how is that working?
You know, I can remember, uh, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, when it first mentioned, nine one one community did not embrace it. They were scared to death of it, that they would be overwhelmed with text to nine one one. The American people proved them wrong. And now it's just kind of a standard thing that we have. So, but like you saw by the numbers and volumes, it's not a large amount. What we seen, when I was in Washington D C, what we saw, the majority is, is the, uh, hard of hearing and deaf impaired. Text to nine one one was a great savior for them, because before that, they had these telephone systems they had to use, and they never worked. And, but they can text and it works very well.
Okay.
Uh, so it's, it's not overwhelming. Uh, but our statistical average of it is about nationwide the same. There's no huge overload or workload.
Is that something we should educate our public on, do you think?
Yeah, yeah. What, again, thank you for my reimagine campaign. There's a lot of that we need to get out there. Uh, there's an application, if you wanna Google search it, it's called What Three Words. It's been out there for quite a while. Um, but what it does, especially, uh, you know, where I come from, rural U S A, it's, it's a very popular tool. In the metro, I haven't seen it that much, but what What Three Words does is your phone, once you have this app on there, you can push it and it'll create three words that translate to a coordinate. If you're out on a hiking trail, bike trail, motorcycle riding, out in the middle of nowhere, and you need help, you can hit one three words. Our, we have software that automatically will translate that back into a coordinate. Uh, and it's not dependent on streets, it's not dependent on addressing, just, it's just takes the coordinates from your phone.
Drops a pin on it.
Drops a pin on it. So that's one of the other things we're gonna, we're gonna push a little harder, because, uh, like I was reviewing with my logistics chief today. What three words in city parks, large events, rural areas, uh, you know, south of Indianola, there's that event center and that stuff out there. As those grow, these become more popular. If you have a softball field, like we have Raccoon River Park, has four softball fields. There's no addresses in there. The address is for the main building. You have an injury on Park Four, how do we find you? Until we get a responder on scene that can give instructions, but with What Three Words, we can ping you and you can ping us and.
Gotcha. Okay. You know, we have some outdoors people here that do a lot of U T V use, go out to like the O H B parks.
Yeah.
I've done that, and being out in some of those remote areas, if something happens, that would be a huge benefit.
Yeah. Yeah. Down, down where I live in southwest Missouri, or my home in southwest Missouri, we have a the, the National Park Service has an A T V, U T V park, has a hundred and eleven trails that cover fifty square miles. It's a nightmare for the fire department. They would call and, and say they're hurt, and you'd start asking, well, which trailer you're on? They couldn't tell you. Ask them which parking lot did they start from? It was always difficult. So we, we took it upon ourselves at nine one one is we went out and mapped all the trails and created them like a road. Uh, and, and that helped us find them, but then when What Three Words came along, it really helped us narrow down these people quicker, faster, especially the people that aren't familiar with where they're at, their, their transits, visitors. I don't know, I, I just saw it on, uh, Google and I thought we'd go hiking. Well, okay. East of sixty five or west of sixty five, which park did you start from? Slowly but surely, we could narrow it down. What three words cuts that drastically? And what a lot of people, and maybe you know, just tidbit of information. You pick up your phone and try to call, a voice call, you may get busy signal, it may not work, but you can still text. Text will work when voice does not.
All right.
Other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I challenge you, like I challenge all city councils. We're not strangers. Come visit us. We love to give tours. What we do and where we're at. With Luke and we can get it all the way.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, consent agenda. Can I motion, get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, second.
Okay, so motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Uh, he was on there.
He was on, okay. Uh, councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minniki?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. I was waiting for one more. Uh, item seven, old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. Item A is resolution approving a twenty eight E agreement to provide fire and emergency medical services to the city of Coming. As you know, we entered into a twenty eight E agreement with Coming to provide fire and EMS services with an increasing cost, so Coming was paying the same amount for a thousand valuation that Norwalk citizens were paying. Uh, it's now time to renew that twenty eight E. I understand that, uh, Coming City Council is supportive, but they would like to reduce the notification to exit to twelve months versus eighteen months, and I'm not aware of any other changes. Chief or Luke, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, council. Um, Luke has kinda been doing the negotiations here with, uh, city manager of Coming. I'm happy to answer any questions operationally, but the financial questions, excuse me, Luke, has kinda been managing, so.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't have the operation questions. I do have the finance question. So, um, if I understand, the current proposed agreement, it would be to set the rate for coming at a dollar ninety eight per one thousand of taxable value. What, what do citizens of Norwalk pay?
For the same service, the same levy, dollar ninety eight. The reason I say for the same services, because it is fire and EMS boots on the street service. It's not for chief's time, it's not for fire inspection, it's not for, um, non-emergency type things. It's just to respond to those fire and EMS calls.
And we don't do any of those other services for Coming?
No. So part of the, instead of trying to describe the formula, I'm an Excel geek, so I just pulled that actual formula right into the agreement. So you would see, we even put little plus signs if it was added, or if it was subtracted from that total cost, come up with that similar amount. So now we can tell our citizens, you're paying the same levy as a citizen in Coming.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Appreciate you getting that done.
Yeah, me too.
One thing that was requested, I don't remember if it was Mayor Highfill or one of their council members, but they said, hey, this has gone up pretty dramatically over the past few years. It's based on valuation. They've had some pretty significant growth, which attributes to it. But also, they said, what's gonna happen down the road? So I did put together some sample scenarios. If both communities grow at six percent, if we have a significant new commercial development, what does that do to the formula? So I put that together and sent that off to them. I could show that now, or I could send that off to council if you're interested in seeing it. But essentially, the more both communities grow, if the fire department grows at or below what our growth is, we see that levy amount go down.
And so this, what And so this, what we would be um, approving tonight is an annual twenty-eight. So that we, so that we can reassess every year or I guess how, what's the? Unless we cancel or change.
That is correct. That last statement you said is in perpetuity. The formula.
Like that legal word? I know I started it.
I'll try not to use perpetuity.
No, I started it.
But uh, but yeah, it is. It stays into effect unless uh, one of us, one of the two cities cancels it. And the rates will of course change because what's built in there is the agreed to formula.
Okay, so that was actually what my question was that I didn't ask, but that was what I was trying to get at, so.
Okay, yes.
So we won't have to revisit this every year.
That's right. That's uh, that, that's the goal. That's how it's written.
And right now it's written with an eighteen month cancellation and Cummings asking for a twelve month cancellation.
I think the draft you have in front of you is, is it twelve month that's?
Yes.
It is twelve.
I think that was the update we sent out.
Okay, perfect.
Coming, we we met with them too. They were really good to work with and you did more than. We did, but I I they were nice to work with, so I just want to mention that.
And there, listen, this is a significant financial increase to them. Um, I did get an email, just some conversations going back and forth, and there was a comment about, you know, this is thirty-six percent of our general fund budget. And in in my mind, I said, I know, so is our fire department for our budget. It's, a lot of folks don't realize how much between fire EMS and PD, it is a huge part of our budget as it should be.
And I am grateful that seemingly this last set of negotiation went very well. But that is not the history of this negotiation. It's been oftentimes contentious and ugly and disagreeable. So I am very happy that it's it's done and we can all think, agree to it. And I'm very happy that coming um, ultimately is is agreeable to this. And it makes us presently whole, but it certainly doesn't make us whole for all of the services we provided them historically. Without charging him for it. So I'm not complaining about that. I just, right, that's the reality of it.
Well, I appreciate the balance of it. For most, I appreciate the fact that it's tied to a formula as opposed to specific number.
Yeah.
That's a smart move and why you're able to get it done. Thanks, chief, for hanging in there from thick and thin. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Motion?
Motion.
That's too bad. I'd say, I'd say most by lady still call that a second by cool. Lindsay, would you call?
Council member Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minaki?
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven B. It's resolution directing staff to create an ordinance for consideration to allow off-road utility vehicles to operate on city roads. This item is a result of several years of discussions about UTVs on city streets. Council made a decision to have this put on agenda, put on the agenda for consideration. I know council wanted to see a full draft ordinance allowing UTVs to operate on our streets, but there are several discussion items that need to be addressed. Before a final draft ordinance can be uh, written. Key items to discuss include answering questions about manufacturer's guidance, where UTVs are able to travel. And recognizing where the thirty-five mile per hour speed restriction conflicts with current speed limits. Uh, council, staff is looking for your guidance. If you are supportive of the draft ordinance. Approval of this resolution will result in a formal ordinance coming forth for consideration. So now's the time to make some adjustments if necessary. So chief or Luke, I'll turn it over to you. So mayor, thanks for outlining those. I think that really summarized it well. At this point, instead of me going through those three items in detail, it was included in the packet. The main thing that I wanted to show, chief and I talked about uh, this a little bit this morning. We felt like the biggest difference that we saw from the task force, which by the way, thank you to the task force that put time into helping us. Come up with this, uh, they were instrumental in helping us with that draft ordinance. So from that information we had till now, probably one of the biggest differences is this red line. And that identifies where UTVs are not allowed within corporate limits. I'm not going to say everybody is in firm agreement on where that red line is. Uh, but this is the recommendation from our legal counsel, which makes it pretty hard for us to go against that recommendation. But this is pretty much outlining number one, the red line is where UTVs can't travel because of the definition of divided highway.
I don't mean to mince words, but would not be allowed to travel, right? Because we're not to the camp part yet. This is the proposal. This proposal is where they would be allowed to travel and where they would not be allowed to travel if approved. Am I understanding that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. They can cross. They can't travel on, right?
Right, I guess my point is, when I say you, when I hear you say they can't travel here, what I hear is, that's already what the rule is. That is not yet what the rule is. I mean, it is, but they can't travel anywhere now.
Correct.
So I am picking at your word choice of can't because it would not be allowed to.
Yes, under the proposed.
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes. You're correct.
Sorry.
Well, we can't, and we could not craft an ordinance that would allow people to travel on that red portion.
Right.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I'm not arguing that.
Okay.
Part of it, I'm just disagreeing with the word choice.
No, I'm I'm trying to clarify.
Yep, fair enough.
So the the green lines that show up on this map, and I'm realizing maybe that's hard to see for anybody in the audience. The green lines indicate where the allowed speed of a UTV would fall in line. With what our current speed limits are within corporate limits. The yellow lines indicate where our city speed limit. Or in some cases, even here, a speed limit outside corporate limits goes above the allowed thirty-five mile per hour speed limit. Of state. And also the ordinance that's being proposed. So it's not that they're not allowed there, it's just there could be some conflict. There can be conflict with a bicycle on the street. So I'm just, we wanted to make sure it was identified that that's where a speed limit.
Sets the limit for UTVs at thirty-five miles an hour. Speed limit, is that the idea? That's what I read.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
No matter where they go, the top limit for them is thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is correct.
So that was, this was kind of a key one. We wanted to make sure we talked about. Uh, chief brought up to me that he still has some other additional changes. I feel like they're most housekeeping. So nothing really substantive as far as a change. We, so we talked about this one, the thirty-five mile per hour, uh, Jim's interpretation. The other thing, Ed, I think you specifically brought up the manufacturers.
Correct.
Discussion. I know I've gone over that with you one-on-one. I included all that information in the packet. Uh, if folks have more questions, I'm happy to answer that. So at this point, like I said, if you see anything glaring that you want us to work on in a draft ordinance. If council said, hey, we're not interested in this moving forward, then you don't make a motion. If you are satisfied with an ordinance coming forward in formal format for a first reading. Then we would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution and a second and an affirmative vote.
Luke, I'd like to point out one extra thing. If an ordinance was created, the state law prevents UTVs from traveling on the red line on highway twenty-eight. But it also prevents UTVs from crossing highway twenty-eight unless the crossing is from a street to a street. And because of that, if you live in Pinehurst or Columbine, you cannot get out of your neighborhood on a UTV. If you are at the Lakewood office, you cannot get out of the Lakewood office on UTV unless you access another road. Without getting on highway twenty-eight. You can't get to the Ace Hardware complex. You can't get to the Made Right complex unless you park in the back.
And this is state law, not our proposed ordinance.
Well, yes, if we created an ordinance, the state law would be im- would be imposed into the ordinance. And that would be a state, that would be a requirement. Did I say that right, Jim?
Yep.
Okay.
You did.
Basically, they just use back routes, back routes are available.
Yeah, for example, so this is Ace Hardware, so from the east. You know, somebody could park along the road here and still access. This is Made Right. One of my favorite destination locations. Uh, they do have parking in the back, so there is accessibility. So it just, it could be a little bit more challenging without being able to access on highway twenty-eight. These are a couple of locations where there's some alternative routes, although there are some places in town, just as chief pointed out, that would not be accessible. They can't go from Shady Lane Drive across into the parking lot?
No, because it's crossing the primary road extension from a road to a parking lot.
Okay, and they gotta go from a road to a road.
Correct.
According to state law.
Correct.
Okay. Seems silly, but.
Yeah, it it does seem silly, but it's pretty, it's black and white and code. We know state legislatures can write silly things, but uh, but yeah, that's.
Mayor, something else to bring up and um, I've had some discussions with members of the task force that. If council chooses to have this come forward in the form of an ordinance, there will be additional opportunity to do review.
Yeah.
Gather your public input. This is just direction to move forward with that formal process.
Okay.
All right, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I do. Yes, I make a motion to.
You know, I'll second.
Move to the next step to direct city staff to write an ordinance.
Okay.
I'll second that, maybe.
So I got a motion by ladies and second by cool. Any further discussion?
And make a comment of just that, things I went through and saw to be corrected uh, or changed, in my opinion. Uh, Lake Colchester was given a pass for driving UTVs on the ice.
That's uh, that specifically is one of the things that has to change in draft that you have in your packet. Versus what we would bring forward later if you guys direct us to do that. The original task force version that they sent us um, had a provision in it that you couldn't drive a UTV. On any frozen water, essentially, streaks, ponds, lakes. And immediately I thought, well, Lake Colchester is a place where they probably want to drive a UTV on it. So Jim and I talked about that and we added in Lake Colchester as an exemption. But then I thought, there are other private ponds and lakes in in the city like yours.
Yes. Not that I would drive on my pond with a UTV, but when I'm eighty, I might.
The lake in uh, Lizzy's neighborhood, uh, the pond at Denny Isley's house. They ice fish, I'm assuming they drive their UTV to take their food out there. And our code would prevent them from doing that right now. So that's one of the changes.
To allow it.
To allow it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
One of the changes that Luke mentioned that would be housekeeping issues in it, just things that we thought of later.
I would like. I think we have a great pride in our bike trails and we're gonna add more and more.
Yeah.
What's the fine for taking a car down a bike trail?
Car?
Yeah, just say I get it, I pick up and drive down the bike trail. I'm stupid and I drive down the bike.
I don't know.
That's a good thing.
I hope it's a big one, though.
My point is, it's the two hundred and fifty dollar civil fine. I think, you know, one thing is not having stuff trapped, safety issues or you don't have your seatbelt on. But I think another is driving down these expensive bike trails, um, a machine that's heavier than what was intended to be on that bike trail.
Right.
That could cause damage. I don't, could there be civil issues with that as well if you crack some man?
Always, there can always be civil.
Yes. All right, but yeah, I just think that two fifty is too light for that, that and maybe sidewalks and the the stuff in between sidewalks directly or whatever it might be. That's not going to do damage. Bike trails was my thing that got caught my eye was, hey, that should be stiff, that's gonna be painful to have to pay that fine.
Not to go too poor a field, but it might be nice to have a fine that goes both ways too. Maybe when some of those bikes don't use a bike trail that they're right next to. That's kind of aggravating.
Okay, that's my input.
All right, Brian.
I would like, as far, as far as the housekeeping stuff goes, um, I really do want to see uh, some insurance on these. Um, and I don't, not positive how we do that on an annual basis, whether they uh, buy a sticker like a boat. Or what, I've had a couple of people mention to me, uh, constituents that uh, that. You know, you charge a lot and that would pay for whatever it costs to administer this. You know, whether that's a hundred dollars a sticker or what. I don't even know what boats are at Lakewood. Uh, what the equivalent would be, something like that, uh, possibly, but I do want to see insurance on these.
So, so Brian, I just want to clarify because I think you're talking about two different things, right? Insurance is one thing, but it sounds like you're talking about registration, like.
I'm talking about verification of the insurance. And I don't know how to do that without there being a registration or something like that.
Right, which I think, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think those are two different things, right? The state requires insurance, so that's already required for UTVs. Having a city registration, which may in the process require you to show your insurance. Right, that's a, having a city registration is a different thing.
Right.
So we had um, the code is, as drafted, requires insurance. And it requires the operator to be able to prove that they have insurance when asked by an officer. Uh, and the insurance requirement is the same as for a car. Registration is not, uh, by state code is not um, is not prohibited. But charging for a city registration is prohibited under state code. So we could do that. But we couldn't charge for it.
Not even the administrative, it's administrative cost of doing a registration.
Sure, one of the people in the room who are UTV owners can verify, but I'm pretty sure it says. We cannot charge for registration.
I agree with you.
So, but we could do a registration, it would just have to be free to the owner.
Well, if, if if you think that there's enough information that uh, or enough people that actually carry insurance on it. Then I, I guess that's unwarranted, so I would move on.
The the counter, uh, the the other option for that, something that I thought of to not. Require more government intervention in this activity, which would be registration. Is to make, make the, have the code say that operating a UTV in the ci- on a city street. Just the mere fact of operating it gives an officer the authority to stop and check for insurance. I don't know how that works, but I think it's possible.
Is there a way, and I guess, um, I I don't want to get outside the rules of order. But I maybe ask some of our people in the audience who might know the answer. Is there a reasonable way to affix your regi- your insurance on the outside? So like, right, like a plastic sleeve or something, so that a police officer could easily see, not unlike a license plate, your registration. Is it, can I ask somebody or is that inappropriate?
I think it, well, I'll just answer if you don't mind. We could just make the registration, you show that you have insurance. And we give you a sticker and put sticker on the machine. It could be that simple.
I understand, but that requires our city staff time. If we put the onus on the H UTV driver, then they have to stick it on. And we don't have to create a sticker that they stick on. They have to find a way to stick their insurance on. Again, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just suggesting.
You know, it works pretty good with automobiles. I mean, but you stop a car, you gotta provide proof of insurance with your registration, right? And I, I just don't think we need an extra layer of bureaucracy.
Yeah, I I I don't necessarily disagree, but when you stop a car. You have to have probable cause to stop a car, right? They have to be doing something that gives you a reason.
That or a reasonable suspicion, I agree.
Okay, so in any event, you can't just spot check. I mean, you you can set up roadblocks and spot check, but right, as a rule. You need a reason and so.
As a general rule, you don't.
I think that part of the discussion is, is there a way to ensure insurance without having to stop a vehicle? I, again, I'm not advocating one way or another, I'm just propagating the discussion.
Insurance could expire too.
Absolutely, right, there's a host of ways to get around.
I would be, I would be fearful if I had something to pick it on the outside that that could at some point in time fly off and I don't notice it and then I don't have my insurance card anymore.
And then it makes some maybe sensitive information easily available to the public, right, so yeah, fair. So then we're back to do the right thing and carry your insurance.
Yep.
Right, same as a car.
Yep, Brian, you got anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody else have any?
Appreciate the information and the background, but I request that I appreciate the response. Work of the task force helped too, you know, and providing information, so all good.
Awesome, Lindsay, would you call?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Miniki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Motion carries, all right. And again, thank you for the task force. You know, we wouldn't be where we're at without that task force, so yeah. All right, moving on, item seven C, discussion potential, Iowa Department of Transportation, transfer jurisdiction for right of way adjacent to eighty-eight seventeen, eighty-eight twenty-five and eighty-eight thirty-three Sunset Drive. So we've talked about the transfer of this right of way before. Decision at that time was to not proceed with the transfer. I think there's several issues with receiving the right of way. Uh, current street driveway is gravel, uh, and residents might want to pave it, and that would be on the city. Uh, there's also issue of maintenance, including removal of snow. So Jim, Wayne and Lindsay, I will let you guys take it from here.
I guess I'll just start, this came up just because we had been working with the DOT on different issues, one of those was the whole wall highway fences appearing on, later on our agenda decision, and while going through that process with the DOT being cooperative with us, they uh, those same individuals who work with Norwalk right of way in charge of it, inquired whether we would be interested in somehow taking jurisdiction over this. This is, I think, a remnant piece of probably the old highway before it went to four lanes and was paved. Uh, and interestingly, it's in the DOT right of way still, so the DOT is responsible for it, but really it's a dirt slash gravel road. I think currently we do plow snow there. As a result of the contract we've entered into with DOT and they're paying us to do that, is that right Wayne?
Correct.
I think that's really, it's, it's an interesting, uh, area as far as the right of way of Sunset Drive or Highway twenty-eight, and it's kinda unique in that it extends further than anyplace else on Highway twenty-eight.
So at the outside of this red box, uh, in this photograph to the north, I guess it's to the north regardless, is that where it becomes private?
Yes.
Interesting.
So just that square is pretty accurate, that's where the DOT owned right of way is.
Would it make sense to get it to the people that have the houses there?
I was just gonna ask that question, yeah.
Right, why can't we, why wouldn't we?
Can we do that?
Making it a private street.
Oh, okay, but that's right, of all those private streets we should have.
I don't know what the DOT restrictions on that are, uh, I imagine at the time when they were, uh, way back when, when they acquired right of way for Highway twenty-eight when it extended out, they, uh, I think there was some sort of responsibility assumed at that point in time where they might have agreed with the land, property owners. Uh, is it possible to abandon it once we take possession of it? I'd have to see what kind of restrictions DOT would place up on it, so I don't know what they're looking at as their responsibilities on that. And then at that point in time, the property owners would have to say, yeah, we're gonna take it on. Uh, property owners might say, no, we like to get our private road, uh, plowed by the city every, every snow and we're not interested in doing that for ourselves.
So can we can we research that? Get some sort of agreement from the residents? That they are going to take it and then agree to the transfer? Then they, then it would all just happen?
We could explore that option, I don't know if we've gotten any input from the residents at this point in time, I think the initial uh, discussion would be to see, you know, if the council is inclined to discuss it any further. Uh, I don't know if Wayne's got any input on whether we would wanna do that or or what that would look like.
Like Jim said, we brought it forward September of two thousand nineteen, the discussion, council at that time declined to take the transfer. I don't know of any major value taking out that burden. Or three residents there would have a paved access, we currently already do the plowing from it, so rather than gravel, they may have a paved access, but I don't know if there's any other upside to acquiring it.
Well, here's, here's, I guess, part of my thought process in going further is, um, that, you know, at some point, we, I want the DOT to redo Highway twenty-eight and then I want the city to acquire it. And so I want to be a good neighbor to the DOT, and if there's not a significant reason for us not to do it, I would like us to consider doing it so that we can extend a little goodwill. However, right, I don't really have any interest in, in the city owning that, but we already do the work on it anyway, so I'm not sure what difference it makes to us in the long run, however, my preference is for the homeowners to have it.
Yeah, I think a difference would be that we're getting paid to do it right now. We wouldn't give you, I can't imagine money's that much.
Right, that's kinda what I'm thinking, it seems, it's a pain, but it seems negligible, but I don't do the work.
Then the only other thing would be the expectations to maintaining it right now, it certainly isn't up to city standards and usually when we take over road from somebody else, we've always given the standard that, okay, you, you property owners or you somebody, bring it up to city standards, curb and gutter, make sure we have a proper turnaround at the end, is right now, you know, a dead end off that road is not, wouldn't be compliant with our road, so we have to look at whether you could have a hammer turnaround or cold sack, but we can certainly investigate it further.
Yeah, I, I would like to investigate it.
I think I had one of the original conversations with people down there. And this all started, they wanted, you know, we're doing that new fence, right, along the highway. They wanted to be included in that. And they couldn't be included in that, because at that point, this, the state says no, because of the right of way, you know, and where it's at. Yeah, I, I would like to see the city investigate it, to see if that's something where we could acquire it and then transfer it. You know, I, I don't know if this is in the city's interest, uh, put that street in there, you know what I mean, it services reality. But if that's something that they're inclined to wanna do, then that's entirely up to them. But that's how I'd do it, it might clean up a, kind of a problem that kinda got overlooked over the years.
So I would move that we explore the more, the information that we've discussed.
I hear a table?
You need a motion on that or?
Yeah, a table?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, so the motion would be to direct staff to work with the Iowa DOT to see if along with the transfer, if the, if the property can be ceded to the, the, the property owners that are already there, the homeowners.
Cause it's not a, it's not a resolution, so we don't have to move to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that would be my motion with the mayor.
Second, all right, so I got a motion by Livingston, a seconded by Miniki, any further discussion or public comment? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Miniki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Okay. Yeah, just as the, as an aside, if you were here for the UTV discussion and want to exit, that would be fine. But you are more than welcome to listen, because we're gonna talk about budget at this point.
We might be here till ten, so get while it gets good.
How's it going, Angela? Yeah, all right. All right. Okay. Item seven D is a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-six capital improvement plan budget, so we'll open up public hearing at seven PM. Our CIP budget lays out our, pretty much our big projects, Gene, I'll let you take it from here.
As you mentioned, it's a public hearing for our, um, capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-six, July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six. These CIP projects have been discussed at prior budget work sessions and the concepts informally approved. Tonight is the public hearing to formally approve these projects and that they be included in Norwalk's fiscal year twenty-six budget. The final budget will be adopted April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the project financing for our budget is, uh, the total CIP is ten point seven million dollars. Six point seven million of it is general obligation bonds that will probably be issued sometime after January of twenty twenty-six. One point seven million dollars is local auction sales and service tax money. With that, we'll purchase four police vehicles and body worn cameras, street and parks maintenance improvements and some equipment will be purchased, a fire department command vehicle and the bay floor of the fire department will be repaired. This also includes IT equipment, including cybersecurity software and the city's Des Moines Airport expansion financial contribution, I believe this is year three out of five and it's fifty thousand per year. Two million for public works projects. These are street maintenance, water maintenance, sewer maintenance, stormwater maintenance projects, these do not include deal bond projects. And then finally TIF LMI fund, we have one point five million for the Main Street Water Main Project, fifty thousand for housing rehabilitation program. The next slide just shows funding by department, uh, the bigger number there is the sewer department. Um, I did mention bond projects and I will get into those, I'll show those to you. The sewer department's big ones, Certified Site, North River Trunk, I'll talk about that in a minute. Public Works comes in next, the storage facility that's gonna be shared with the Parks and Rec Department, and they're gonna be getting two plow trucks. And then it kinda just goes down from there. The next is funding by category, funding by department, now I'm showing funding by category. Again, if you look, the sewer is, um, the major, uh, number there, and then it shows like differences in, uh, street construction, buildings, equipment, vehicles, trails and parks improvements.
You know, this shows a community making investment in their future. That's such a critical infrastructure component, wastewater.
The next slide, I start to get into the, uh, projects. The Certified Site, North River Sewer, this is not a new project, but we are borrowing money, um, for a portion of this, the total project is about twelve million. This is the, uh, the picture here shows the area around Delaware, that's all I have right now. But this project, uh, is a sewer truck main that will provide for future development to our south and west, which is annexed twenty-nine hundred acres. So in twenty twenty-two, we borrowed some money for this project and received an ARPAP grant from the county to help fund this project. In twenty twenty-six, we'll borrow the remainder, which is about five point six million. We do have this, um, under contract and the construction contractor is Northern Lines. The contract is about nine point nine million dollars, they are about fifty percent completed to date on that project, so they're moving right along. The next slide is, um, extension of Seventeenth Street from the middle school south to Wright Road. This two hundred and twenty thousand is for right of way acquisition for the future roadway project. We estimate about eight and a half acres needed for that area at about twenty-five thousand an acre, so that's where we came up with the two twenty. Next project is school trail connections, these are ongoing, we had a greenways plan that was approved maybe five years ago, maybe longer, time flies. Um, this is one of the projects that was designated as a priority project two. It's, uh, basically improving connections to Norwalk schools. This is for the sidewalk gaps on Elm Avenue from Ovia Elementary to a trail along Cherry Street. This also includes a hundred thousand dollar MPO grant and a sixty thousand IDOT grant, if those are still available. Um, the next slide, two slides are basically projects that were approved, but still in play for this year, it kinda wanted to just give you an update on these, these are the Maple Heights Water and Sewer Projects. The water project, we anticipate will be done, um, part fifty percent of it done this year and then the other half done in, um, twenty twenty-six. This, the water is an extension of a twelve inch water main on Fiftieth Avenue north of Beardsley Street. This will help serve future development as well. The sewer will be doing the same thing, the next one is the sewer. B and K does estimate that the sewer will be, um, mostly if not fully complete this fiscal year. So those projects are moving right along. Final project I was gonna talk about is the water tower, it's already been approved, we just haven't, um, gone out for bid quite yet. We anticipate that will happen this calendar year. And I did wanna mention, um, this will be an SRF loan, Central Iowa Water Works. Now that we're in with them, we are doing an asset transfer, all cities are, um, and then it's called a buy-in process. We will also have an SRF loan for that as well, so we will probably have about twelve million dollars, twelve million dollars in water, SRF loans. We are looking at twenty-year term to kinda spread out, you know, those increases, hoping to keep those increases at six percent or lower annually. Kind of allowing use of some of our growth and then extending those out twenty instead of ten years. The SRF loans, I will say, are right around two, two point seven five to three percent, so they're at a really good rate right now, unfortunately. All I have unless you have questions.
Lynn, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say thank you, as always, easy to understand and you give us six different ways to, to appreciate the impact and I am grateful for that.
I don't know why all those people walked out on you, because you do such a
Lindsay, were you received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
Do we have any public comment here or online? Hearing none, we will close public hearing at seven oh seven PM. Item seven E is a resolution adopting the City of Norwalk Capital Improvement Plan Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We just had a public hearing on this item, Gene, you got anything else? All right, any discussion from council?
Motion.
Motion from Baker, second from Livingston, any further discussion?
It's a good thing those people invested in the future and the past, so we can do this now.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right, uh, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Miniki?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, item seven F is public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to change fourteen twenty-one Sunset Drive from C two community commercial to IPUD, which is infill planned unit development with C two uses. So we'll open up public hearing at seven oh eight PM. Uh, this property is on the southwest corner of Sunset Drive and High Road, Luke, I'll let you take it from here.
Yep, so we're across the street from the, the car wash, um, there was formerly a brick home there, um, that has been removed as, uh, the owner has plans for its redevelopment, um, and kinda the first step in that is consideration of this IPUD. Primarily dimensional in nature, uh, as you can see on the screen, it's a Primarily dimensional in nature, as you can see on the screen, it's a strange shaped lot, so setbacks get weird there with our traditional C two. So this sets setbacks to basically ten feet on the north and west, zero to the south, fifteen feet to the east. And then five feet for parking setbacks. I would note that the very end of the packet is a kind of draft layout site concept of the building sitting on the far west end of the lot and parking in front of it. We are currently working through some discussions with D O T over access onto High Road. Our D O T access management agreement says that we won't approve accesses closer than a hundred and fifty feet to the highway. And so right now that's sitting around a hundred. So we're just trying to figure out the best way to handle that. I believe it's in the developers engineers court at this point in time. But these setbacks will allow for a lot of flexibility moving buildings around and being able to accommodate that drive lane if it needs to go farther to the west.
Lindsay, were you received any oral or written comments?
We have not.
Public comments?
Mayor, Council, Jason Lund with Snyder and Associates here on behalf of the owner. Kelly, Dr. Kelly Cook is here with me as well. As Luke mentioned, we're still working with the D O T on the access point. That concept a little bit, but that is kind of our ideal layout there due to the audiology use of the facility. We have to answer questions if anybody had it.
I don't really have any questions. I am not sure you would have my support to have the parking where it is. I'm in support of the overall concept in the project and I will support the the resolution, but I anticipate High Road to become more heavily traveled and I'm not interested in creating a situation like we have with is it the come and go right down the street here? And yeah, so, so anyway, so just F Y I, right? I'm only one. But just so you know, I don't anticipate agreeing with that location of the drive.
Appreciate the feedback and we can work through that at the cycle point.
Yeah.
That's kind of why we left the P U D a little open on the setback so that we had that.
Cause I have a question on the setbacks. That would be on the west side, what houses are. So that setback would be a normal distance, right? Am I remembering that right?
I believe, and I already closed my ordinance. I believe in a C two that we could consider that a side setback and I think that that would typically be twenty, but I can tell you definitively in two seconds. Maybe more than two seconds. Depends how fast the computer loads. Okay, our traditional would be, I apologize, it is ten foot. It's the sum of each, it's twenty. So yeah, so that would be the traditional setback on the west side.
You, I, I appreciate the fact that you're flexible in your approach here. Cause you may have to do a little moving around in order to get D O T approval anyway, you know. But I'm appreciative of the fact that somebody's looking, doing something good with that lot.
Anything else?
I assume the, the old store across the east was grandfathered in apparently with their entries.
Uh, RE Max on the other side?
Yeah.
That would be my, my guess.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Jason, your proposed plan also eliminates the driveway access that was, was out to Highway twenty eight from the, from the house. Is that correct?
That's correct, Tony. So we would no longer have an access out on the highway. This, this concept, again, is a concept at this point, puts the traffic onto high through a controlled intersection, which we feel is a better access management through this corridor rather than having more traffic out on the highway, especially in the commercial case. And even further south, there are commercial driveways there too, so.
We'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven fourteen P M.
Thanks for coming out.
Item seven G is first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa. By rezoning fourteen twenty one Sunset Drive. Let's see, from C two community commercial to infill plan unit development with C two uses and adopting the fourteen twenty one Sunset Drive infill plan unit development. Just had a public hearing on this item. Luke, is there anything else?
Nothing else.
Any other discussion from council or public comment?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Livingston for the first reading, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item seven H is public hearing regarding a zoning amendment to change seventy six eighty County Line Road from A R Agricultural Reserve to R E one rural estates. We'll open up public hearing at seven fifteen P M. The owners would like to do some improvements to their property but can't due to the current zoning of Ag Reserve. This changes to rezone to rural estate so the owner can make their improvements. Luke, is that right?
That is one hundred percent correct.
Alright.
Nothing more complex.
Alright. Lindsay, have you received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven sixteen P M. Item seven I is first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by rezoning seventy six eighty County Line Road from A R Agriculture Reserve to R E one single family rural estate. Just had a public hearing on this item. Luke, you got anything else to add?
No, sir.
Any discussion from council or public comment?
So improvements to the property. There, I, I want to make sure, or I guess like my question is, is this a first step in being able to subdivide this?
No, it'd be additions to the house.
Okay, thank you. Motion.
Okay, second. Motion on first reading from Livingston, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Alright, motion carries. Item seven J is public care regarding Highway twenty eight beautification project. Alright, we'll open up public at seven seventeen P M. We have been talking about this project for a long time, so it's exciting that we're going to finally replace the fences along the north section of Highway twenty eight. Also, a side note to consider of giving some grace to the current property owners along this corridor. Some of the fences are in pretty bad shape and these property owners know that we are proceeding with the project and they probably deferred maintenance on some of those fences. Lindsay, I will let you take it from here.
Yeah, so this is exciting. We got three bids back. We did do two base bids, one for a six foot, one for an eight foot. Staff and engineer, which I should mention, Justin Ernst is on Zoom. If you have any questions for him, we're both though recommending the eight foot because they came in under the engineer's estimate. So it'd be Jorgensen Contracting for the eight foot would be seven seventy nine, two oh one fifty. The six foot is just like forty four thousand four hundred ish below that. So many of the property owners in the area have requested, not requested, but talked that they would much prefer an eight foot wall over the six foot as well, just for some noise and I think it would look prettier. The only other thing I would add is I think it'd be really great to have some lights along the fence, but decide that maybe some other time.
And that's not in the current bid.
That's correct. Justin did get me some lighting costs if anybody is serious about that and wants to.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Or what I would call like lights that would shine onto the, onto the wall. They're about three thousand dollars a piece. So we could put some at some of the columns, maybe just the entrance columns or along the fence. He is still waiting to hear back about like a strip of lights, like solar or maybe like L E D like what we have on City Hall.
Okay.
So I can get you that information later, once he's able to get that to us.
That'd be great to have.
And, and so how many? If we did the one that, the three thousand dollars and we did it, for instance, at every pillar, is that what you said? How? Do you have any idea how many pillars are?
Justin, is there eight?
There are four entry column monuments and then I believe there's four other ones. So depending upon what you want to look at, there are two lights a piece that would just shine on the columns. They're solar powered, so there's like a two, three by five foot or two by three foot solar panel right next to them, kind of in concrete that we'd probably place them on. So depending upon how much you want to light up, it depends. We'd probably recommend maybe doing the monument ones or the entry ones at least, but all depends on how you guys want to proceed.
Thanks.
And they could be added anytime, I guess. They're just, they're just solar powered, so there's not a whole lot to go into them.
Yeah, other than that, unless you have questions, it will go right on the right away because the D O T did finally give us approval to do that. So even though we have all the easements, we don't necessarily need them, but we, they will try to avoid utilities when doing so.
Alright, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
Do we have a public comment on this? Hearing none, we'll close public hearing at seven twenty P M. Item seven K is a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Highway twenty eight beautification project. So we just had a public hearing for this project and this is the first of three resolutions needed to get the project launched. Council passed a resolution that approved the preliminary plan specs, form of contract and estimate for the remote, for the project. This resolution is the final approval for all of those. Lindsay, got anything else?
I don't.
Alright, any discussion from council or public comment?
I have another question. So this bid came in where in relation to our budget for this?
Gene, we had one point five?
One point five million.
Yeah.
So we have, it came in under budget.
Yeah, engineer's estimate was nine, yeah, nine seventy nine, seven eighty seven.
We have the money in the budget to add the lights. That's my vote.
Alright.
So we, we do have enough, how do you want to say, room in there to cover the cost of the light.
So I'll make a motion to, to approve, I'm sorry, because I'm going to, right, I'll make a motion to approve the plan specifications, form of contract and cost of, estimate of cost of the Highway twenty eight beautification project with lighting. And I'm not necessarily specifying how many lights. I would leave that to the discretion of the engineer not to exceed every pillar.
So, okay, so can we, can we, instead of doing that particular motion, direct staff to come back with ideas on the lighting?
Yes.
As, as a separate item.
I, I would prefer doing it that way because our public bidding rules and everything, we sent out bids. And I don't necessarily want to make the lighting part of this project.
Okay.
Because we didn't bid it that way.
Okay, then yes. Okay, fine, then I just move to move the resolution as stated.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so I got a motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke. Yeah, just to confirm that resolution includes the eight foot.
Uh, that's actually in the next resolution awarding the contract.
Build that wall.
Alright. Okay, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Which one am I on now? Item seven L is resolution, resolution awarding contract for the Highway twenty eight beautification project. So this is the second of the three resolutions needed to start the project. This resolution awards the contract to Jorgensen Contracting Company for seven hundred seventy nine thousand, two hundred one dollars and fifty cents. Lindsay, anything else to add?
I do just want to say thank you to, I asked Robin on behalf of Justin, we're going to store some materials at the Elizabeth Holland Park area. So thank you for allowing us to do that. That's all.
Cool. Any discussion from council? Or public comment?
Motion.
To approve this eight foot fence.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion by Livingston to approve the resolution with, with the eight foot fence, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item seven M is a resolution approving contract and bond for the Highway twenty eight beautification project. So this is the third and final resolution needed to get the project rolling. This resolution approves the contract and indicates how the city is going to pay Jorgensen Contracting for their work. Lindsay, anything to add?
No, sir.
Special questions from council or any public comment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. I don't know about any of the rest of you, but I need a quick break. So we're going to go take a five minute recess.
Alright.
Alright. Ready, Lindsay?
Yep.
All right. Let's go back into session at seven thirty one P M. Off of the recess, uh, item seven N. It's a public hearing regarding the Cherry Parkway widening project. So we'll open up the public hearing at seven thirty one P M. Uh, Wayne, I'll let you take this one.
Thank you, sir. The project involves widening Cherry Parkway at highway twenty eight to make a dedicated right turn lane as you're entering the highway. Right, uh, also included in, included in the project is pedestrian improvements. We had a crossing over the highway, an ADA compliant one. There'll be an eight foot trail from the highway to high road and a new twelve inch water main to help improve our water system, some redundancy for that neighborhood. Plans are in the packet. There'll be one interesting thing. You'll, you'll remember there's a bike lane on Cherry Parkway in the curb and gutter. We're gonna be pulling that off. Once we get to high road, we're gonna pull that bike lane off of the road. Ever on that eight foot trail and bring it up to the highway to a, a traditional crossing there. That'll again help that, with widening a pavement, that'll help clean that up, make it safer for everybody there. The work is, they can start work on the improvements that don't impact the lanes. Before school, that's out, but the lane closures and deep detail routes will be after completion of the school year.
Okay. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this item?
We have not.
Do you have any public comment? Or questions from council?
I have had a lot of, um, public feedback about that area and frustration from residents in that area of people disregarding the stop sign and the congestion and that kind of stuff. So I'm, yeah, this is, I think hopefully we'll improve that and is a good, good project, I think.
I didn't go make it safer all the way around.
All right, uh, anything else? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty three P M. Item seven O is resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Cherry Parkway widening project. We just had a public hearing for this project and this is the first of three resolutions needed to get the project launched. Uh, council passed a resolution that approved the preliminary plan specs, form of contract investment for the removal. This resolution is the final approval for all of those. Wayne, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions or discussion from council?
Motion.
Second.
Oh, golly, that's tough. Uh, I've, I got a motion from Cool, a second from Minneke. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven P is a discussion regarding lowest responsible bidder and potential resolution regarding the responsible bidder. So Jim did legal issues involved with this. I'm gonna just turn it over to you.
Okay. The reason why we're discussing this today is, uh, is with regards to the Cherry Street, uh, Cherry Parkway improvement along with the Main Street water improvement that you see later on the agenda. Uh, the, the lowest bid on that was TK Concrete Inc. And one of the responsibilities of a city is to not win awarding public projects is not just lowest bid. It also includes, uh, lowest responsible bidder. And the reason why this is being brought up is, you know, no fault to the guys that are sitting here right now. But the history that the city has with TK is one event, which is a Wakanda Street, uh, improvement project. Uh, and as far as I know in the history of Norwalk, we've gotten into litigation with one contractor over an improvement project. And it was TK Concrete on that Wakanda project. Uh, at the time, it was, you know, not saying the reasons why, but it came in extremely late. Uh, got the individual running that project who are not, uh, the individuals that are here today. Uh, would make a lot of promises on getting things done that didn't happen. Uh, would reset deadlines, wouldn't happen. And in the end, the, it came in extremely late. Uh, it was marked all the way through with lack of personnel, lack of equipment. Uh, lack, lack of skilled personnel. And in the end, the city ended up having to finish the work. Uh, the litigation was resolved. Uh, they fought, uh, at the time, liquidated damages, which always gets fought. I mean, when, when projects are lost, that's always up for debate, but uh, that was fought and eventually the city just said, we're gonna finish it and they finished it. It was, you know, some of the restoration work was pretty bad. Uh, I think one of the big things was like dirt and garbage and glass. Uh, in, in the, uh, restored parking areas. Uh, so it was, it was a train wreck, the entire process was. Uh, and because of that, I think the council needs to at least have that discussion and know that because, like I say, one of your findings are that this is a responsible bidder. Uh, since that time, I think, you know, so though there were a lot of issues there, I think also taking into account now that that was ten years ago. My understanding is that the management of the project is different now than what, who, than they had it in the past. Um, we, on your, on your table today, there's some recommendations that they had provided today. Uh, from, I think, three different jurisdictions, uh, making, given written recommendations. I think that they have done some projects from what I've heard with the public schools here in town. Uh, and I, I really think it needs to be open for discussion. Normally, you don't get a discussion like this. We don't, obviously, we don't go for every contract and talk about the responsible bidder. And a lot of the reasons for that is our engineer checks it out before. Another indication of responsibility is the ability to actually uh, give all the bonding requirements. I mean, clearly if a company was defaulting on all kinds of contracts on public purpose, they wouldn't have a bonding company very long to, uh, to even make bids. Uh, and this bid from TK was responsive. Was the lowest bid. It provided all the necessary body and everything like that. So I know there's a couple of council members, I think the mayor was around at the time that, that project and I just wanted to have some discussions on that. You've got two different resolutions in your packet right now that I, that was put together. One would be to find them irresponsible and not eligible uh, for a contract. The other one is to find them responsible. Uh, I think it's important to point out that that resolution, if you were to find them responsible, it does have a provision in there that, you know, it's, we had this discussion here and obviously if there's more issues on these two projects, if they were awarded, that uh, that would certainly be taken into consideration if they were a little bitter on a future project.
So, finding them irresponsible bidders. What's, let's move, we take the next bid?
We would, we would take the next lowest responsible bidder, uh, which would probably be, which would probably be the second highest bid.
George, I can't hear George. What did he ask?
Uh, what would happen if we found them to be irresponsible? We'd go to the, apparently the next highest bid?
Yes, yep, because we're required, we are required to take the lowest
Responsible.
Responsible bid.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other option would be to deny all bids. You can always do that. If you don't like what you've got, you can just say no to everybody.
On the one that's coming up later, had all the bids. I didn't see the bids on this one.
Okay. I think, um, yeah, I don't know if they're in there or not. I hadn't, I hadn't.
Second one, but not the first.
Yeah. In this discussion, I think also would count, even though it appears two different places on the, uh, agenda. You know, you can consider this discussion to go towards that item too for the, uh, for the Main Street because I think, you know, your decision here is gonna be a decision for, uh, the Main Street water improvement also.
The, the next lowest bid was from Sternquist Construction for about eleven thousand five hundred dollars more.
So, is now an appropriate time to speak?
Sure, sure.
Um, so I was here, uh, during the last issue. Um, and George, I wonder if you were on, um, the school board at the time, ten years ago. Because one of the things that I recall from that period of time was that we, as, as, um, Jim has explained, had a, uh, very unpleasant experience with TK. And I was on the committee for, um, I believe it was the new administration offices and the school was using, so subsequent to our issues, the school was using TK for something. And I said, you guys are crazy. And the school said, no, we had them before. They did a great job for us. We haven't had problems with them. Um, so I don't know if you remember.
I ended my time there at two thousand fifteen, so right, that was
So.
During that year, could have been there.
Right about.
Yeah, so probably saw it, saw them do work there, I guess.
So, um, when I, when this came up, um, my inquiry was, well, can we put some specific language in the contract? And I was told, not really, but you know, we can cert, we'll make this record and whatever. I don't easily, I, I don't generally forget stuff like this. I don't easily forgive. But I do recognize it was a long time ago. Um, I don't, Jim, you said it's different, um, management or supervision. I don't know if that means the company's under different management or, right, because if they're, if TK's doing a bunch of projects, then I'm pretty sure that the two guys who are here today are not committed to overseeing our project, right? So I just.
I, I'm pretty sure it's the same ownership.
Right.
Uh, it's the same ownership, but not necessarily the same project management.
Um, so one of my concerns is, um, I don't feel like this project in the scheme of things is a real big project. And so because, right, what do I know? But because it seems like a smaller project, does that mean it gets less priority, less focus, less attention from TK? If they get spread too thin again, do we end up with the short end of the stick? Um, and I'm not asking you, Jim, to respond to that. I'm, really, it's more of a rhetorical question, I guess. Um, I appreciate the work. I appreciate the letters of reference. I appreciate that, um, our schools um, have continued to work with TK and have found them to do, um, good work. So it's important that, it's important to me that I say this. It's important to me that TK hear this. Um, I am willing to not stand in the way. I'm willing to say we'll give TK another chance. Um, but, right, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, right? It, I'm, I'm not, it, it is a huge burden on the city to go through litigation. It's a huge burden on the city to fight with a contractor to get something done right. And um, we have, not sure if I'm allowed to say this, but said anyway, hopefully I can, we have in the past found TK to not be a responsible bidder. Um, since that first time, they have bid low for us, you know, on another project and we have in the past found them to not be a responsible bidder. Um, so this would be a departure from that. I think it was many years ago. In any event, all this to say, um, I am, I personally am comfortable, but, right, y'all are warned for your predecessors' actions.
May I ask how the, uh, litigation was settled?
It was, it was settled out of court, but it actually, I mean, we went through discovery phase and everything else and I think.
Took a huge hit for it.
Yeah, we, we took a hit for it. What had happened was got towards the end, uh, it was, you know, in the city's opinion, completely inadequate. So when the time came to have a completed project and they said, okay, it's time to pay us, we said, no. And that's basically where it came. You know, at that point in time, there was a dispute on what needed to be finished. Uh, there was a dispute regarding liquidated damages. And at that point in time, uh, we, we had withheld the final payment and it was substantial enough that, you know, going into, I think, the city expected to pay some money back to TK, but, uh, there was just a negotiation between how much would be returned, how much would be retained.
Sounds like a nightmare to step back into.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I, I agree with you, Brian. I, I think it, it was definitely a nightmare. Um, from my perspective, right, they've, they've, um, done by all accounts, good work for uh, everybody that I'm aware of for the last five years. Um, so from my perspective, again, I'm not speaking for anybody else. From my perspective, I'm willing to give them another shot.
Well, I was here then too. I remember the frustration. And remember, oh. Thank you, Mayor. I was here then too. And I remember the frustration and disappointment in the performance of the company. It's very clear in my memory. I also realize that, you know, they have a different management team evidently now, right? And so, uh, I don't know, as you can hold against a, a business forever. Um, if, if they have shown, and evidently they have demonstrated, you know, corrective actions that, with other communities. So, uh, I would not have a problem with trying them with this project. And let's see what happens. That's why I'm at. And if we burn, get burned again, then I guess, besides me being upset, I will probably have good reason to believe that they're not reliable.
Yeah, two projects.
Yeah, there's two projects. There'll be two projects.
Two projects, though. I think the water, the water main project's gonna be bigger than this one.
Hmm.
Right, and we, right, we didn't, the, the past project was all concrete and, right, it wasn't.
It was, there was sanitary sewer involved.
Well, in the middle of the street, they had to go down deep.
Okay, I didn't recall.
There's a larger project than either of these.
No, no, I knew it was a much larger project. I didn't recall that it was water as we're referring to it on this.
Yeah, they had reconstruction in there.
I do remember now.
Yeah.
So has anyone had the discussion directly with them regarding all of our apprehension and concerns?
Yeah, there, there are two representatives of TK here.
Kind of having it now, I think. I'd say so.
Yeah, come on up.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is First Sound, I, yeah, I've worked here for the last, um, six years, almost seven. Um, so I kinda came in quite at the end of some of these issues. Uh, this is my colleague, Jason. He's another project manager. Um, I sympathize with what you went through, you know, years ago. Um, I can imagine being in your positions because I know that you have, um, taxpayer money to look out for. Uh, but Jason and I take pride in what we do. Um, we built really great. Uh, but Jason and I take pride in what we do. Um, we built really great relationships with um, communities that TK has burned in the past. It's not a fun thing to do. I've done this in one other community before, um, the city of Pleasant Hill. I've, uh, I spoke and um, just introduced myself and kind of gave our side of, of what we have going now. Um, I kind of have picked up pieces a little bit and, uh, we, we take pride in what we do. And I believe that we're reputable, um, responsive, um, accountable. Um, and, you know, I'm, I would be managing this project myself, um, so I would be on site and, uh, I would commit to, to being here. So I'm open to questions if you have any for me.
Has manager changed since then?
So I don't know particularly what the personnel looked like back then. Um, I, I really don't. I don't know the, the manager that, um, was in charge of this project. Um, my boss is still the same. Um, he's still the owner, a sole owner. I'm, I'm not going to go into like his personal stuff, but you know, maybe he had going in the past. But he, Jason's been with TK for, um, a little bit longer than I have, eight or nine years. Um, so he kind of started to pick up the tail end of, um, you know, as the pieces, we're kind of falling apart and he was kind of bringing up into a management role. Um, he, like, like I said, you know.
When was it falling apart?
Probably that same timeframe, I'd say, you know, that ten or twelve years ago.
Yeah, but what, why was it falling apart?
I don't know. I wasn't around, so.
Okay.
I don't know if it was, you know, it had to have been obviously the management side of, um, I just no accountability and, um, lack of, uh, skilled workmanship, I would say. Uh, I would say there's probably a lot of reasons, so.
Or when was the company started?
Uh, thirty-four years ago.
It's been around a while.
So I think that there was a period, um, where there was, you know, some falling outs of some sort. I think just lack of management. Um, some, I think some personal things with, with.
Same owner for thirty-four years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so he's been around a, a, a long time. You know, he started just a single man crew in, in Pella and worked his way up. And then, like I said, that there was some management falling out, um, a, a decade ago or a little, a little bit more than that. And then, um, he brought Jason in and then, and then I came in and kind of helped, you know, clean up some of the behind the scenes, behind the scenes, um, these relationships. Uh, tried to, uh, you know, uh, education for employees and, um, I mean, we, we have a great hiring process now. We have, um, over eighty employees. And take, like I said, we, we've tackled a lot of big projects over the last couple of years that we've had great success with. Um, have some great relationships. Those were just some references I, I got just, you know, in twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice. Um, so I could probably get a longer list, but, um, we enjoy what we do and we take pride in it. I know people in Norwalk. Um, it's, yeah, I, I, I sympathize with, with the decision that you have to make, so. Try to understand, you know, how frustrating this, it was and, um, it's a big decision, so I understand that.
Any employees, uh, have you grown? Oh, well, how big were you when you first came on, I guess?
When, when I came on, probably thirty-five or forty employees.
About doubled?
Yeah.
I would like to know of what Wayne thinks. He's.
I appreciate it, Brian. I was, I wasn't here either during the condo project.
I know you like to talk.
Keep man at the end, uh, condo project wrapping up, so, um, I don't have a lot of experience with that. Uh, past employment, I, I did work with TK Concrete as a consulting engineer. And I don't recall any, anything, um, unacceptable at that point in time. Um, it's really the, the, the issue council needs to consider is the past on that one project. I think if we didn't have that project here in Norwalk, we wouldn't have any problem recommending TK to move forward with this one. So I don't, don't have a lot to offer on this.
Tony, uh, have you worked with TK before and what, 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 what's your opinion as far as being, being from the engineering side?
Sure, um, I really, you know, I think back to, you know, my thirty-six years at Feaster and Kim. And, and I really don't have a lot of direct experience with TK Concrete. Now, we've worked with them o- over the years. They've bid a lot of our projects, uh, something they've been successful with over the years and some not. I can say that, uh, we worked with them recently on a, on a couple of projects, uh, that went well. One in Mount Air, uh, another one in Waukees, um, in just, in just the last couple of years. Uh, um, and, and they were awarded a, a large downtown streetscape project in Oceola here just recently. Uh, that project is really just started, so I don't know, heck, can't really give you a lot of feedback on that one yet. Uh, uh, just started some water main work. Uh, really, it's all that's been done on that project. But that's a, that's a large downtown streetscape project that was awarded by Oceola, uh, to TK Concrete. So, um, other than that, I don't have, uh, much direct experience, uh, uh, with them myself.
Other, other questions from council? Okay, so can I get a motion to either approve the resolution that finds TK contract as a responsible bidder? Or a resolution that finds the, finds TK contract to not be a responsible bidder, too, sorry?
I will make a motion to find them a responsible bidder.
I would second that motion.
Hey, I got a resol, I got a motion by Livingston, a second by Cool. Any further discussion?
They can probably hold on to their oldest child.
Lindsay, would you call?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item seven Q is resolution awarding the co, awarding contract for the Cherry Parkway widening project. So this is the second of three resolutions needed to start the project. This resolution awards the contract to TK Concrete Incorporated for three hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and zero cents. Uh, Wayne, you got anything else to add?
Just wanted to apologize to bids that make another packet. We did receive eight bids on the project that were good, good bids. We budgeted five hundred and sixty thousand. Right now, we're expecting the project to be coming under that around five hundred.
Okay. Any discussion questions from council? Motion. Second, motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven R is a resolution approving contract and bond for the Cherry Parkway widening project. So this is the third and final resolution needed to get projects rolling. Uh, this resolution approves the contract and indicates how the city is going to pay TK Concrete for their work. Wayne, anything to add?
No, sir.
Any discussion from council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven S is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement number two for additional engineering services for the Cherry Parkway widening project. Wayne, I'll let you take this one.
This is a supplementary original agreement we had with Snyder for the design engineering. This one will be for construction administration. As Jack mentioned, it's kind of a smaller project, but there is complexities to it with the water main and traffic signal work along with the staging of the project. So we prefer to have, um, the designers on site for inspection.
Questions and discussion from council?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item seventeen, it's public hearing regarding Norwalk Community Entrance Sign Project. So we'll open up public hearing at seven fifty-eight PM. This is another project that we've been working on for quite some time. Holly, Holly, you take it?
I would just say the same thing that Lindsay said earlier. It's super exciting. Finally getting a stinking sign and the entrance of our city. Um, and just excited to see too that the bids also came in, uh, lower than estimates and budgets, so.
Cool. Uh, Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
All right, any public comment?
Just a quick question, right? I mean, without poring through the documents again, um, does it include its backlit? Right? Does it include ground lighting?
Um, I would have to look back and see.
Okay.
I want to say it's, um, internal channel lit.
All from the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Anything else? Uh, carry none. We'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven fifty-nine PM. Item seven U is resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost uh, for the Norwalk Community Entrance Sign Project. We just had a public hearing for this project. This is the first of three resolutions needed to get the project launched. Council passed a resolution that approved the preliminary plan specs, form of contract and estimate, uh, for the remod, for the new sign. Uh, this resolution is final approval for all of those. Holly, you got anything else?
Yeah.
Any questions, discussion from council or public comment?
You know, I'd say, I stumbled upon a fax. That's how old this was.
A fax.
From, it's like nineteen ninety-six, where it was brought in front of the council at that point in time for the community sign. Council decided not to spend the money and refer it to a committee to make sure that we did it right and they didn't want to rush it. They want to make sure it was done right the first time. Well, we didn't rush it.
No, and then it came back before us again when I was first on council.
That's right.
And we, yeah, I was very dissatisfied with the outcome of that. We spent a lot of time and money getting the sign.
So about thirty years in the working, so it should be good.
Build that sign, build that sign.
Good committee work.
That's right.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
I'll take that as a second. Motion by Cool, seconded by Baker. Uh, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven B is a resolution awarding contract for the Norwalk Community Entrance Sign Project. So this is the second of three res- resolutions needed to start the project. This resolution awards the contract to Edge Commercial for seventy-four thousand four hundred dollars. Holly, anything to add? Any discussion questions from council or public comments?
Motion.
Second, motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven W is resolution approving contract and bond for the Norwalk Community Entrance Sign Project. So this is the third and final resolution needed to get the project going. Uh, this resolution approves the contract and indicates how the city is going to pay Edge Commercial for their work. Uh, Holly, anything to add?
No.
Any discussion or questions from council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Holly, would you call a roll?
Uh, I'm Lindsay.
It's getting late.
Member Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
It does say Lindsay.
Just make it up as you go along.
Uh, okay, well, uh, motion carries. Item seven X, public hearing regarding Main Street Water Main Replacement Project. So we'll open up public hearing at seven or eight oh three PM. There you go again. Uh, this is going to replace the water main from Wright Road to North Avenue. Wayne?
Thank you. Currently on Main Street, there are, there's a two-inch water main and a four-inch water main, so it's terribly undersized. Uh, no fire protection in that corridor. This project will run an eight-inch water main from Wright Road up to just south of North Avenue where our street skating project ended, so we won't get into that. It'd be a great project for that, for that neighborhood and for the whole, that street and that greater, uh, community out there. This will be, I'll probably bring this up every time this project comes up on the agenda. This is going to be a complicated project. It's an old corridor. I mean, we're going to run into things underground. Um, you're probably going to get complaints from residents. It's going to disrupt traffic or the people's driveways. Um, it'll be complicated, but this is, it's needed terribly. And like I said, it'll be a great benefit to that neighborhood. It'll take most of the year. We'll have to coordinate with the school on some water shutdowns, uh, coordinate with everybody on the waters. Be new water service lines installed. I think that's a great project, but it's going to be complicated and it's going to be disruptive for people. So no matter who's doing these projects, things will come up. Um, there's always unmarked gas lines that get hit, you know, it's nobody's fault, just things like that. Just stuff to be wary. You're going to get complaints. And doesn't necessarily mean anything's gone bad or we've done something wrong. Just there's issues out there.
Something that I thought, just thought of, I think when we were doing Holly, Holly drive behind Made Right, Luke's favorite restaurant. They found asbestos lines. I don't know if those were water or if those were sewers. Is that it?
Yeah, it could have been trans, trans by water main, yeah. I don't expect that to be out here. Um, same thing with lead water service lines. We could have run into that. We're not expecting it, but we're, it's on our radar. We're looking to that as well. Um, but both those are health concerns for the consumer, you know, people that drink that.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be interesting to end up with an actual plot or map when we get done and where different things are. It is all kind of a guesstimate in that area right now, isn't it?
Many things are located. Every utility company tries to locate their infrastructure, but, yeah, they're not, not always on. Yeah, correct, yep.
Yeah, but we'll be able to put this into GIS for, for sure where it is in GIS.
Yeah, you bet.
Uh, any other questions from council or, yes? Just one thing, Wayne, we had a hydraulic study done several years ago. Was this part of one of the recommended improvements as part of that study?
It is. I don't remember. They had a few phases of water running through there. I can't remember exactly how it was spelled out. Um, this one was a little more complicated because B and K had done some preliminary work on it, uh, before I came on board. So some of the work was already completed, uh, I mean, prior to that study. But generally, improvements in the founders area was a high priority out of that study.
Okay. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
No, we have not.
All right, any other public comment? All right, we'll close public hearing at eight oh six PM. So item seven Y is a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Main Street Water Main Replacement Project. So we just had a public hearing for this project. And this is the first of three resolutions needed to get the project launched. Council passed a resolution that approved preliminary plan specs, form of contract and estimate for the remodel. This resolution is the final approval for all of those. Wayne, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, questions, discussion from council or public comment?
Motion.
Second.
By Livingston, seconded by Cool. Any further discussion? Bearing none. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston? Yes. Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven Z is a discussion regarding lowest responsible builder, bidder and potential resolution regarding responsible bidder. Jim, I'll turn it over.
I think, as I indicated at the previous discussion, uh, we were just pretty much looking at that previous discussion as this item also. So the council's already passed a resolution, certainly not saying the council can't discuss it further. That's certainly the prerogative to do so, but, uh, I, I think the last, uh, agenda item where we discussed it for the Cherry Street, uh, improvements, uh, applied to this number, to this item.
I repeat everything I said.
There you go.
Does it matter that this is a, a very complicated job as, as Wayne said?
Does it matter? I guess the council has the discretion to find whether someone's a responsible bidder or not. Uh, I think you're kind, would be kind of contradictory to say if they were responsible bidder on the other one, but not responsible bidder on this one.
Uh, no, what I'm actually doing is, is, um, you know, letting them come back in and show how great they are on a smaller job, but, um, on a, on a really big important job, maybe they haven't earned that yet, is kind of what my point was.
Well, we kind of find them responsible better.
I, I understand Brian's point though, right? The issues are different, right? The project is different. So I could see arguably that we could say for the road project, we find them the responsible bidder. For, but for this water main project, we don't. I think they're different projects with different skills and different requirements. So I could see what Brian's saying. I am choosing to find them to be responsible in both aspects.
Cause I was going to say, there's, there's water in, there's water lines involved with the other, with Cherry Parkway widening project. Cause I was gonna say, there's, there's water in, there's water lines involved with the other, with Cherry Parkway White project.
Yeah. I, I just think this is a different. I could see where there could be different interpretations of the project. So, but.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I under- I understand what you're getting at, Brian.
That'd be subbed out.
Yeah. Do we need?
What's that? I would, I don't think we need to have a motion on it unless the council members, I mean, right now, uh, the way the other resolution was. Uh, it found responsible bidder. I don't think we need to have another resolution. I'm not gonna say that we don't, won't, that we can't have another resolution. If a council member wants to find uh them not responsible. Uh, I, I think we would. That wasn't contemplated, but certainly I'm not gonna contradict a council member. If, if they want to discuss that, I think we would have to maybe get into a little bit more details of the old project and the abilities to perform. If we want to try to differentiate between one level of project versus the other level of project.
Well, Jackie and Ed were here and they lived through it. And so I'm kind of acquiescing to uh, and, and George has had experience with them evidently at school. So I guess I'm acquiescing. I just kind of threw that out, wondering about it.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's understandable. I think it was a point well made.
My experience is I don't remember, so it must. Or it wasn't bad, put it that way. Cause if it was bad, I re- I would remember, so.
So I'm not, I'm not hearing a motion to, or to, to find TK Concrete, not to not be a responsible bidder, so we're gonna move on. Item seven A A is resolution awarding contract for Main Street Water Main Replacement Project. So this is the second of three resolutions needed to start the project. This resolution awards the contract to TK Concrete Incorporated for one million fifty thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Wayne, anything else to add?
I just wanted to add a few more comments. Sorry they're not necessarily related to this item, but if you recall, two years ago, we did a twelve-inch water main on Wright Road as well. It's in place now. So significant water improvements for that neighborhood um that, that were desperately needed. V and K worked really hard as our staff on the design of this project to, we didn't want to destroy all the pavement out there or even two-thirds of it. Cause we don't want to get into a position where we got to do a full rebuild and essentially maybe kick in an assessment project. Um, but I am adding to the C I P a possible uh maintenance project. Once they get done with work, let's have to assess the condition of the pavement there. Um, cause we're gonna, we're gonna remove some of it, but not all of it. We'll, we'll assess it next year to see if we need to do a maintenance project there to make sure it's not suffering some damage or need any other repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah. Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Item seven B B is a resolution approving contract and bond for the Main Street Water Main Replacement Project. This is the third and final resolution to get the project rolling. This resolution approves the contract and indicates how the city is going to pay TK Concrete for their work. So uh Wayne, anything to add?
No.
Any discussion from council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven C C. Resolution initiated initiating rezoning, referring the rezoning proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning amendment to the Norwalk zoning map by changing eight eighteen and a half North Avenue from C four Founder's Business to R F Founder's Residential. Luke, I'm gonna let, just let you take this one.
Yep. Uh, so this is a property that uh actually sits behind another house off of North Avenue across the street from the parking lot for uh City Park. Um, and it at some point in our history is zoned to different zoning districts, which is an allowable thing per zoning. Um, we don't see it too often, uh, but they're looking to transact on the house and their uh financiers had some concerns about the zoning, particularly with the fact that the house sits on the commercial lot right now and is not rebuildable one hundred percent um per non-conforming laws. So this would simply rezone it all to the Founder's Residential, which we believe is permanent.
Discussion or questions from council?
This is one of those legacy situations, isn't it?
Sure is.
Uh, motion.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? No, you're good.
I couldn't remember.
Okay, so I got a motion from Livingston, seconded by Mineke. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Item seven D D, the second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by amending Maple Heights Plan Unit Development regarding location and type of residential uses. So at our last meeting, we had a public hearing on this amendment to the Maple Heights P U D and approved the first reading. Luke, you got anything to add?
No, sir.
Any discussion, questions from council or public comment?
Uh, is this the one that um it's going from commercial to R four?
No.
No.
Okay. I can't pull it up since I'm on the Zoom. So, all right.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, discussion from council or public comment?
Motion.
Second. Motion to approve the second reading by Livingston, seconded by Mineke. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Mineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right. Item seven E E, second reading of an ordinance amending the master plan on rules, regulations, and guidelines for the Orchard Hills Plan Unit Development as contained in ordinance zero four dash zero five. So at our last meeting, we had a public hearing on this amendment to the Orchard Hills P U D. Luke, anything to add?
Um, I guess just to clarify, since uh Brian did just ask about this one, uh, first off, this is item you were asking about, Brian.
Yes.
The uh, i- it's not particularly a rezoning from commercial to uh R four residential. Um, back in twenty-ten, the P U D did have an amendment that was approved that said that this could be an R four parcel. Um, but it said that we needed to come back and do an affirmative zoning action to either set it to R four or commercial at time of development. Um, very similar to what we did recently in the Hughes P U D related to the Nutrasport area as well. So just wanted to make that clarification. Happy to answer any other questions.
So again, why would we change something from commercial to R four?
I believe it's already R four.
It was commercial.
And it was.
C two.
Yes, and in twenty-ten, we added an amendment that said there were two zoning classifications that could occur on the property, R four and C one. First, yes.
So we're just deciding now which one we're gonna have apply.
Essentially, yes, because um what you don't want to do was leave the commercial zoning intact when they're building a residential pro- project. Because then all the commercial uses could happen in any of those residential buildings that they built. So you're really saying, nope, now this is what it's allowed to be.
And we still have an area next to North Avenue that could become commercial.
Correct. So the other thing this does is it splits that parcel one into uh parcel one A and one B. Um, so that the project that's being proposed is the R four zoning. And then it actually takes the R four zoning away from the one A parcel um and just leaves it as uh C one.
So can I go back to what you said a minute ago about? And I'm sure that I'm paraphrasing, but if we don't approve this, then they could go forward with their proposed development. And then there could be commercial buildings in any of these residential.
I, they couldn't do that because the, the P U D specifically says that uh it's C one or R four and that a rezoning needs to happen before development occurs to set the zoning. Uh, why we did that is so that you couldn't do it. Yeah.
I know. That's not my question. So, so right now, they could not build this, the concept one site plan. Right now, they could not build that.
Correct.
We have to act and we have to say, okay, we're gonna make this the residential place where you could do that.
Yes.
And I think, and I, right, I don't want to put words in Brian's mouth, but I think what I hear Brian saying is why would we give up the possibility of commercial in this area and allow it to be residential?
That's, yes, that's a, a question, I suppose. Uh, you know, this is.
Exactly right.
The uh request before us, um, I know we have Barry, uh, County Assessor with the project. He can speak to that. Um, I guess our staff opinion to that is there's two allowed uses there and I guess I believe it says it's allowed to happen there. We just have to take this action. Similarly, we couldn't allow a commercial development to come in and, and submit a site plan. We'd have to take the sa- same action. So.
Right.
For what was decided in twenty-ten, it felt like we're allowed to have a, a residential project here. So.
And you don't have an opinion about whether or not this is a good commercial site? I know that's not the question at hand. I'm asking you that question.
Sure. Uh, my opinion on it um from a commercial site is we've had commercial developers ask about it off and on during my tenure and no one's pulled trigger on it. So um, you know, from a current development standpoint, potentially not. Um, as we work down North Avenue and get more uh residential on the west side of community, we do our North Avenue realignment. Um, potentially could become a, a more valuable piece. Um, I think from our staff perspective, this finds a good medium between that, preserving some of the frontage and letting a developer uh consider their project on the back half.
I think it's kind of marginal commercial area, my personal opinion.
Yeah.
And you know, my thinking is we'd want that commercial to where those escars are, you know, eventually. So and that's gonna be more, the more valuable stuff. I mean, the pricing on this would be indicated it's not that uh, you know, valuable commercial ground. I mean, I get it sold for, I don't know what they're asking for it, to be honest with you. I think it was like five dollars a square foot for some reason. I don't know what the listing was for, but could be wrong. But uh I would have a big, I don't have a big problem with that. But my question is that parcel one A, that's still up to be determined if it's gonna be R four or C two.
No, I believe, and let me reconfirm that.
I, yeah, I was gonna bring that up. I wanted you to look at that. Besides, I think what the designation for parcel one A is and what the council was told at the last meeting. And I think um perhaps earlier was your talking. That uh when it was initially initiated and sent to P and Z, I think the council expressed an interest in locking in parcel one A as commercial. If you're gonna agree to an R four. At the last meeting, it was said that the developer did not want to lock in uh parcel one A and that they wouldn't keep it the way it is. And I think what this reads is that it can be R four high-density residential and or C one in the future. And they, they would have to come back to the council at that point in time and.
Thanks for that clarification, Jim.
So we wouldn't be defining the other area or changing it.
That's right.
You're just creating the, the shape of it, not, not the boundary or not the uh, the uses.
And by doing that, that doesn't change what would be going in the, the other area, right? I mean, we could, we're approving that other area where they intend to construct the building, right?
Correct.
But the other lot, we're not changing.
That's right. You're basically having it stay, keep the same status. You're reconfirming that here because it's in the ordinance uh when they rewrote it, saying that it was going to be uh, can be one or the other, but that does not make a change. Cause I think that's what it currently says is that wording.
Correct.
So really the only change you're making to it is that southern part, the parcel one B is you're locking in. This parcel one B also has the either or wording. Uh, and, but it has the requirement that it be brought back to the council. And that's what they're doing now is they're very bad at the council saying, okay, as far as the either or, we're choosing the R four alternative versus the C one alternative.
Okay, so that gives us control over what's coming up there. We know they have to build this or something like that.
We know that as far, yeah, this locks in parcel one B to what you're seeing here.
Okay.
What I use up for just future discussion?
That's right.
Um, and if we do not approve the resolution, what happens with this property? Nothing right now?
So second reading, they'd have to, they could bring it back in a year, right?
Correct. I, I believe that a, if it did not get three votes tonight, correct? Um, that it then fails the second reading and uh the same proposal can't be brought back within a year. The zoning language says a rezoning with this being a P U D amendment. We've had times in the past where people have brought something that we felt was substantially different enough, but was still a similar proposal and brought it back. So I wouldn't say definitively that it was shut down for a year, but you know, it'd have to be a substantially different proposal. Like, and it just like remove two bill, two units or something, right? It, it'd have to be.
Yeah, it would be a judgment call of fact.
Fair, fair enough. I, yeah.
Is that because you're a process where you talk to the neighbors two hundred feet and all those other stuff?
Uh, this one is not, this was already initiated. Uh, so that process is when you, you first initiate a rezoning, that's when you go talk to the neighbors and things like that.
We did send uh notices of the public hearing and the request to the neighbors. So as part of the process, so they are aware.
Imagine the Catholic.
I don't know if we've gotten their input. They had, they were given notice of the ability to give input. I don't know if they've given input or not.
We have not received any.
This property, this property's been on the market for some time.
Yep.
I mean, twenty years that I know of.
But uh also I think it, it kind of cracks me up that these people are all interested in R four apartments and stuff. And we've already okayed about fifteen hundred apartments that are yet to be built. We're gonna have a glut of apartments as well. But that's their problem.
Yep. Well, this is a, this is a sixty-two and older project.
This is a fixed age.
Yeah. This, this is, I think it's, is it sixty-two or fifty-five, Luke? Sixty-two.
Okay.
Okay, but.
Two, he's lowering the age.
Sixty-two, sixty-two. Sixty-two.
And so if we approve this as a sixty-two and older, can they change that requirement?
So right now, the zoning does not specify that it has to be a uh, a senior project. So the layout that they have presented and their application, yes, that's what they plan to build. In theory, someone could come in and build this exact same thing and not have it be that. Um, the zoning doesn't lock in that sixty-two.
But doesn't a PU, can't we lock it in with a P U D? I mean, this is a P U D, right?
Yep.
So I frankly am not in support of this unless we lock in the age restriction.
Sure.
That's my position. I would, I would support it if we lock in the age restriction.
I think we can do that before the third reading.
Yeah, that's a pretty minor add to the language of B one or parcel one B. So.
That's where I'm at with it.
Makes sense.
Brian, I'm, I'm almost fully on board with you, but if we put in the age restriction, I'm okay. It mitigates that issue.
Yeah, that helps. Um, but at the same time, when I read that C one or R four, I feel like I just have to choose one of those if I'm the developer and I'm good.
Yeah, but we still have to pass the P U D.
Right, right.
Well, but I mean for one A. It says it's one of those two. And so I, as the developer, get to choose it, not counsel.
I don't think that's how.
I don't.
No, cause it, it, it has to come back here to decide one or the other. Chris, correct, Luke?
Correct. Your discussion.
What I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, your discussion this evening will certainly impact how I communicate things to folks in the future. Um, you know, we as staff have viewed it as we're just locking in what it is. Um, you know, we as staff have viewed it as we're just locking in what it is, right? Um, so we certainly in the future with anything will say, hey, before you get too far down the line, we want you to come talk to our council about what you're doing and make that decision uh way more informed.
So can I, I'm sorry. Did you have something, Brian? I apologize.
No.
So can I make right, for the second reading, we still have to have a motion. Can I make a motion to approve with the amendment of locking in the age requirement? Or do we have to wait until it's written for the third?
No, I think you can, you can include that in.
And that is the motion I'm making.
Senior apartments.
Senior sixty-two and over.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I got a motion by Livingston and a second by Cool. Uh, any further discussion?
I would note that, right? Somebody's here.
Much worse.
I, I would, for the record, I would appreciate if you would identify yourself and we could establish that we've kind of like been quietly verbally communicating that you're good with a sixty-two year requirement.
Yes, ma'am. I was about ready to jump out of my gourd. Yes, just put that requirement on me. Yes. My name's Barry Account. So I'm with Woda Cooper Development. We are the developer on the project. And yes, we, we've seen your market. We've seen it grow. We're in Des Moines now. We have six other projects in the state. Um, we're the ones doing the alley landing project, the old Plaza Lanes bowling alley on the north end of Des Moines. So I say that because I'm excited about that project as well. So as our, our portfolio grows in this area, yes, we think sixty-two is so right for the area. And, and thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks. Okay. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven F F. Uh, is the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two water rates in chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees providing for amended secondary water irrigation rates. So uh irrigation continues to drive up water usage uh within the metro area in the summer time. As a metro area, we use about two times the amount of water than during winter. Also, high nitrate, low, high nitrates lower the amount of water that Des Moines Water Works produce. So we're running into times where we're looking at implementing water saving procedures. It's very costly to the overall metro to create more capacity. Uh, the purpose of this rate change is to offset the overall cost of producing more water. Uh, we also realize that a secondary positive impact is a decrease of water usage. We're asking council to change our irrigation meter rates to an inclining block schedule and to use that rate all year long. Gene, anything to add?
I was just gonna add one thing. Um, at the last meeting, Jason asked for the average consumption. I didn't have that readily available. Um, last year, and I did email this to him. Um, I don't know if he received it yet, but the average last year was seventeen thousand six hundred. Um, obviously the warmer months, the higher, and then over the last three years, twenty thousand two sixty-six. So just thought I'd throw that out there. It doesn't change my recommendation to do the three tiers just for a year and then maybe reevaluate it next year.
Uh, discussion question from council or public input?
Motion.
I got a motion to approve second reading. Do I get a second?
Second.
Too late, Brian. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Mineki, Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston? Mineki?
Yes.
Uh, Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. With that, uh, I think you're getting tired.
I am.
Uh, item seven G G. As a final reading of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city system, in the city of Norwalk, Iowa, a natural gas system and to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty-five years. So we approved the second reading at our last meeting. This is to replace the local option sales tax on our natural gas bills with a one percent franchise fee. Jim, Gina, Luke, anything else to add?
Nope.
All right, any discussion from council?
I wanna poke the bear. Residents are awful glad we don't live in Johnston.
That was five.
Johnston's a little sorry I'm not on their council. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, okay. Uh.
Second Ed's motion.
Okay. But thank you.
I was talking.
So, motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Jackie or Lindsay, would you please call a roll? Somebody call the roll.
Yes.
Baker?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. All right. Ooh, motion carries. Item seven H H, this is final reading of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city of Norwalk, Iowa, an electric system and to furnish and sell electric energy to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty-five years. So we approved the second reading at our last meeting. This is to replace the local option sales tax on our electric bills.
Motion.
For the one percent franchise fee.
Second.
I got a motion by Baker and a second by Livingston. Lindsay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mineki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven I I. Uh, as a final reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk, Iowa to adopt the Norwalk Technology and Industry Overlay District. So we approved the second reading on the addition of the overlay district to our ordinances at our last meeting. Luke, anything to add?
No.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by Mineki, Lindsay, please call a roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes. Yeah.
Livingston?
Mineki?
Yes.
All right, item eight, future agenda items. Purpose for this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion to have items placed on future agendas. This is not for discussion of the merits of the subject matter. Do we have any future agenda items for tonight?
I do. I would uh like in hopefully very short order to get on the agenda a discussion about um upcoming potential travel to DC for the Des Moines Greater Partnership and Kosovo.
We were gonna talk a little bit about that, just a little bit.
Outstanding.
All right.
So if I'm not satisfied, I'll renew it.
Okay.
How's that?
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Item nine, council inquiries and staff updates. Like to remind everybody, this portion of the meeting is much less formal than the rest of the meeting. Uh, you may hear some back and forth banner, general joking around. We believe that this can build camaraderie and cohesiveness between staff and council. But please keep it professional. Jack?
Nothing else.
Here, Lindsay?
Uh, yes, quickly. Um, got an email today from the census that we will be getting a refund of two hundred twenty thousand, two hundred forty dollars and sixty-one cents.
Wow.
So that brings our total cost of the census to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-five. I rounded some cents there, but so much better than what we had initially paid.
Thanks for that work.
Is it Bitcoin?
Good.
Awesome.
And, and we are good, we're, we're gonna keep pushing it.
Yeah.
So this is prior to, I think, or we, we, we haven't got a response from the letter for asking for the refund, so.
Correct, yeah. Or, and maybe this is it, but we're unsure. So yeah, we might as well keep pushing. But uh, also we will have a council meeting March twenty-seventh, not spring break week, but the week after. All three of you here have told me that you can make it. Brian, I've not heard from you. Also not heard from Jason, so please let me know as soon as possible.
It'll depend on the uh internet service in Sedona.
Okay.
All right.
Um, lastly, uh, it's today, March sixth. So March thirteenth, if there's no appeal at the state level or at the city development board level, they will submit our annexation to the state and the Warren County, and it'll be official once we publish it in the newspaper. And then we're gonna start it all over again for four-ish more property. So be prepared for those agreements to come forward. That's all.
Cool. All right, uh, Adam?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, Parks and Recreation, we are now accepting our applications for all of our seasonal positions. So if anyone knows of anyone looking for some part-time seasonal help, send them our way. Uh, couple big dates coming up. Park Restrooms will open April fifteenth. Uh, the pool will officially open season on June first, and then Mackinich Sports Complex will open up on Monday, March twenty-fourth.
Awesome. Thank you. Tony?
Uh, we've got word that uh a few of the subdivisions that we have going on are gonna be starting up uh real soon. North River Project is going well. Slow down here with the weather, but uh that project is going well. So, um, and of course we got our water main project on Main Street starting soon. And then the Maple Heights uh sanitary sewer project and water main extension on fiftieth Avenue, we bidding shortly here this spring as well. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Holly.
I want to thank Tony and Luke Nelson and Wayne for um a lot of behind the scenes complex work that they are doing for this infrastructure, for the Southwest Development Corridor and um Project West. You know, there's a lot to that. This is the first project out there, first great project out there. So it had to happen at some point, but I know it's a ton of work and they're doing a great job. So thank you guys. Um, and we just announced D Moss Orthopedic Centers that will be building in Norwalk a new medical facility, which is pretty exciting. North of City State Bank. And then I just wanted to touch on, I sent an email to you guys last week about Michael Foods. He, he asked me, the, the vice president asked me to relay this emphatically to everybody. So I'll just reiterate that um Michael Foods, they're so excited, so happy to be here. They said that it's just exceeded their expectations being in Norwalk of all of their facilities around the world they have because they're part of Post. Um, and just to reiterate some numbers for everybody to, to remind where we were before they came. So the value of the land they're on uh before they built was ninety-five thousand dollars. The value of the property now is almost fifty million. So ninety-five thousand to fifty million. And then the property taxes before was thirty-four hundred on that land. It is now one point eight billion. So just as a reminder, these big companies are such uh huge assets to the community. So.
All right, Gene. Oh.
I just said. Nothing.
Chief?
Um, we had applications for police officer clothes on Sunday. We have thirty total. Uh, which is an improvement over the last couple of times and passed on Saturday the fifteenth.
All right.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Wayne?
Uh, there's a lot of projects on the agenda tonight. Thank you for all those, and there's more to come. So it's gonna be a busy summer for everybody. It's exciting though.
Good. Carrie?
Nothing tonight.
Luke?
Uh, seven house permits in February to be expected a little bit lower than normal, but uh not as low as maybe we had thought. So uh that's good. Um, got our NRCS easement uh appraisal stuff back. Um, working on the next step of that. Hopefully have that wrapped up early next week, which should put the ball back in the NRCS's court and hopefully wrap that up here in the coming months. So that's good.
All right. Cool. Ed?
Yes, sir. Attended a ribbon cutting today for the independent advocate at that lovely flower shop here in the city.
Ah, yeah.
Anyway, uh, Mark announced uh that they had won an award, a wide award for the best, uh, what do you call it, website or web? You know, anyway, in this world uh of, of internet, of any of the, of the other news that originated here in Iowa. So they're, they're number one in that field. And uh, anyway, that, that was great. And uh, it's uh, yeah, really good asset for our community as well, so they need to hold it. Anyway, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. George?
Nothing.
Brian?
Nothing.
Brian, did you have to drive somewhere to be able to get internet access to get in?
Yes, I did.
Thank you for.
For you, Brian.
Thank you for going through that hassle.
Yeah. Nothing.
Okay, a couple things for me. Uh, we have community chat on Saturday in here, uh, nine o'clock. Uh, for council, Luke's, for Luke's review, I sent you the copy of Luke's review. Meet with Luke if you have any additional comments for him, or if you want to talk about it with him. We're not gonna do a thing here. Uh, we'll have a discussion item on the April sixth agenda about Luke's salary increase. So be prepared for that. Uh, the Kosovo trip is gonna be June twenty-second through June twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, one of those twenty-seventh. Uh, how many do you have in your budget?
This fiscal year, we have three.
Three?
Next year, we'll cut down to two, I think.
Okay, so I assume Holly's going. Uh, if you would like to go on the Kosovo trip, please let Holly know. Okay? Uh, the DC trip. Uh, I, I think, I think Holly and Luke both need to go. Uh, since they are city, city employees, I think at, as city employees, we as a city need to pay their way there. We have budgeted two people to go. I am also going to go and I'm gonna pay my own way. If anybody on council would like to go on the DC trip, I would encourage them to go ahead and go, but I'm gonna ask you to pay your own way for that trip. Let Lindsay know and she will let you know the cost. Okay?
I, I think, uh, I think it's important that you go, Mayor, and, and I think the city should go ahead and cover your costs as well. I don't understand why you would have to pay that. You're, it's totally for the city's benefit.
Well, we, we live under the, the guise of House File seven eighteen. I think that's the reason why. So my opinion.
Is this uh to lobby for the uh exchange, the exit?
This will be another contact for the interchange, yes.
That's super important to the city.
I agree.
Agreed. By the way, Brian, I had the same argument with him already. And he, and, and Luke lost.
Well, maybe somewhere along the way.
I will be out there already. I wouldn't mind if you do have a, a big meeting or something lined up. Maybe I could beat up.
Okay, we'll let you know.
Okay. Yep.
And what, what was your comment? We'll force you to take money.
Well, we could give you one of those standby seats way in the back.
I'm, I'm going to, my wife and I are gonna go out. We, we're gonna have a few days before the DC trip and we're gonna spend time touring DC. And then I, she'll come home, I'll do the DC trip.
That's lovely.
Yes, it is. Uh, that's all I got. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.